You've got mail.
Okay, folks, I got four o'clock with one. Nick stand up and pledge his card if we sleep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, several items to cover today, so we'll get this as best we can, as quickly as we can. Two sets of minutes to approve. Ten nineteen and eleven two.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for October nineteenth and November second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All right, we have payroll in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand seven eighty-five twenty-eight cents.
Make a motion, we approve payroll in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand seven eighty-five twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we need to acknowledge you received the payroll claims accounts payable report, which is in the amount of ninety thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I make a motion, we acknowledge you received the payroll claims in the amount of ninety thousand eight eighty-four seventy-eight.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do you have any anti-checks request?
Not at this time.
Okay. Okay, Debbie, you're up.
Hi, thank you very much for including me today. We're doing a simple ask for the Park County Soil and Water Conservation District to have access to the Park GIS system. And this will be used to do some mapping. We will not change, of course, any of the information in there. We'll just use the layers to make map. The Park and Vermillion SWCDs have been able to hire a full-time and a part-time employee for a year and a half through a National Association of Conservation Districts grant. We got about a hundred and three thousand dollars to hire a full-time and use a part-time contractor. And one of the responsibilities or duties that the full-time person is going to do is we're going to start some watershed programs, trying to get some more funds into the county for some perhaps cover crops or some programs to help improve our Wabash River, Sugar Creek, and some of our other smaller streams through some 2019 grants. But to be able to do that, we need to start doing some water testing programs. And that will require us to map some of the watershed areas in the state. Vermillion County already uses GIS, so if we can get access to the Park GIS, then our employee can work across both counties really easily.
Nick, do you have any difficulty with that?
No, I read it. I didn't see any issue with it.
There's no cost to the county. It's basically going to be just enabling us to have this GIS on computer in our office and be able to use.
You guys have any questions to give them access to?
No, I don't.
They're pretty dangerous out there. You gotta watch those people.
I don't have any doubt about that.
Limiteded just for that purpose.
It is.
Yes.
So I'm saying the motion, and let's do that for that limited use agreement for the watershed mapping. So I'd make that motion, that we approve the agreement to allow Park County and Park County Soil and Water Conservation District to have limited use of the GIS for doing their water conservation work.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yep, we'll get a copy here for you.
There's two copies. She gets one and I get one.
Okay, Cindy. The council just granted some tax abatements here to Scott Pettens. And a major expansion there happens. Tell us what you got.
Yes, so in 2015, the Redevelopment Commission adopted a policy in which when a tax abatement is granted, a percentage of the abated amount would be paid into the Park County Redevelopment Commission on an annual basis, which is five percent. So with that, there is an actual, they call it abatement calculation agreement, that the requestor has to sign, the council signs. And we're asking the commissioners to also sign that, just recognizing that that five percent is going into redevelopment. So I have four of those for you to sign for each of the abatements that order that are in process of being awarded. Let me send that on granted. There's still a second resolution the council has to pass before they're finalized. So I'm just asking for your signature on those three, for six, three, four abatements.
Okay, anybody have any question, concerns on that?
No.
We probably ought to have a motion then to accept the abatements as presented by the partnership, Park County, and the county council. That'd be my motion, that we accept the abatements as presented?
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jim, is there any question about the four different types? Are you guys good with all of that, what we're doing?
I was at the meeting, so I'm okay with it. That's council, really council stuff.
Yeah.
I just didn't know there were questions as far as what?
They're making about two million dollar investment in the council. That's great. And they're moving the, they purchased the Shopko building and they're moving in there. But they're also making some major equipment, capital projects at the existing building to reuse some of their packages and their products that they're making now. So it's really quite an expansion.
Do you want to go and sign that?
Yeah, let's do it now.
Okay.
Just to have it done.
Should be labeled, little red tap there for your signature. So Laura, the people also signed to attest that. And then as soon as I get the final resolution from the council, I can complete, fill in that form, and then get the originals to you. Okay?
Yep, I'm sure.
There's just one more piece that needs.
The ones who have you here who are doing this did, I got a call from the folks who were in Washington looking at the Lea Le Bryant property. Do you know if they got, got any look at that or not?
I haven't talked to anybody that's spoken to you. I did speak to one person called Dan.
This was, no, or should we looked at it?
No. No, but I do have three other things for you, but I'm willing to hold off until later so that you can get through your agenda.
Oh, that's okay. What do you got? We're all here for you.
All right, well, I just don't want to take a ton of time, but.
No problem, go ahead.
Just wanted to thank the commissioners for allowing us to apply for the COVID-19 Business Recovery Grant that we received through OKRA. With that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand plus the two-thousand dollars from the community foundation, we were able to create a revolving loan fund. We had fifteen businesses apply for that, and we stretched that money to go across all fifteen businesses. So we just closed all of those, all the documentation required on Friday. So loans went from anywhere from twenty-five thousand, which was the max, down to five thousand. The intent of that, of course, is to save and retain jobs. So as long as they stick with that and they retain the number of positions that they put in their application, at the end of two years, that loan can be forgiven. So then it would turn into a grant. So they were very, very appreciative, and I just wanted to pass that along from them to you, that allowing us to do that application, that aim of Park County. The other grant that we're working on, which you okay to be forward with, was the Community Corrections for People with Disabilities. So I'm working with Basil Wyman's staff. There's really not a whole lot you need to do, other than using your name and just a county identifier. But there is a pretty extensive sub-recipient agreement that you will be asked to sign. So that's basically an agreement between you and cars, which you'll probably want to look at. I have a copy of it. I've asked them to look at it and have their legal look at it, to make sure that they're all good with that, because it does talk about audits and some ways that you have to check up on what they're doing with that money. So as soon as I get the okay with them, then I'll probably pass it off to Nick to review, because it's a pretty extensive, like I said, agreement. But other than that, I think we're well on our way to putting that together. The applications are due January the tenth.
Super.
Okay. And the last thing I wanted to just kind of refresh you on was the Regional Wastewater Studying Report that's going on. Just as a reminder again, the reason why we started that is we have several communities, being residents, businesses, towns, coming to us and asking for help, because they're in communities that without wastewater, they don't see opportunity to grow. They see population moving out. People with old septic's just aren't getting it fixed, which is causing some environmental and health issues. They can't attract any kind of business without having that utility available. And the other comments I've been, you know, those, a lot of times small towns, those lots are so small, if somebody tries to rebuild or to do something, they're just not large enough to put in the appropriate type of something that is required today. So in with all of that is the reason why we moved forward with even doing this report. So we did receive great dollars that allowed us to do the report. That should wrap up in December. So the next step in that process would be sending a petition to IDIM to allow us to form a regional district. And that would have to be submitted by the county, so by the commissioners. In doing that, that does not obligate us to install a system, get funding, or anything, because we still need to get public input. We still need at least fifty percent of a population to move forward with any type of actual installation of the sewer system. So what we will be asking you to do shortly, I'm going to say maybe January, February timeframe, is to look at that, what I call the petition to IDIM, basically just to form a district. And it identifies kind of the hotspots or the project area that's been deemed. We have an advisory committee that's working with the engineers on this whole project. So once that preliminary engineering report is adopted and okay through the county, then that will be our next step. So I just wanted you to be aware. But again, it's not obligating us or obligating any resident to sign up for any kind of service. It's just forming the district.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
That's it.
Thanks. All right, then we have a resolution dealing with capital improvement plan, which is our responsibility to create. I think Bruce talked to John about this, I think. And he just talked about what the plan is. Nikki, you okay with the resolution as it is? Any concerns?
No, I didn't have any issue with the resolution. It's just amending the prior resolutions you had as far as the usage and how it's going to be used. As long as that's how you guys want that to be done, then. List two different projects in the second section I had.
Yeah, that's all there is. Go on and go.
You want to take it to Bruce?
Yep, this is just required by law, so.
Yep.
I make a motion that, unless, Dean, do you have any questions? I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 202024, which is the capital improvement plan for the added tax. And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Did you bring your husband, Julie?
No, neither.
No, he just, we just getting ready to do the extension contract. You know if we had any questions or concerns on him? Must not, he must be okay.
We can't speak about that, we could speak.
Oh, all right. Well, I'm guessing it's same, it's always been in the past. Although I don't know what the amount was last year.
I don't know what the amount was with the council. Laura, of course, you know the council's appropriated.
Yes.
For next year's budget for the funding of this. Okay.
Then I make a motion that we agree to the extension contract, extension services contract between Purdue and Park County.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next act, we just need to, do we have an ordinance for that?
That's what I sent to Nick.
Is that, are you looking at the State of Indiana memorandum?
You see a CARES Act resolution?
Right, so if you're using option one, you don't have to have an ordinance, because that's what you're already doing. You only need an ordinance if you're using option two.
Gotcha.
If you're wanting to change to option two or not.
Okay, now I don't know why we would.
Because otherwise, you're doing a re-entry of it as far as your general account.
Have to reverse everything, yeah.
Right, reversal on it.
Yeah.
So I mean, if you want to do option two, we have to publish a notice on it, have a hearing on it, and then execute an ordinance.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't take option two as?
It's just a matter of an internal thing, as far as how you're wanting to do your bookkeeping, as I understand.
My attitude on it was, I was telling Bruce before the meeting, that really, to me, that's up to Laura Howard, they, they and Roy Howard, she and Roy figured this ought to be done, so. And Bruce too, I mean, it's what he does as well, so.
Well, I mean, option two is by far easier.
Right.
Bookkeeping wise. And I think Roy made a comment in his.
So we do need resolution.
Email, but he's.
We have to advertise before we can do ordinance. We haven't advertised. So I mean, if you're wanting to do that, we just advertise that we're going to consider that at the next meeting.
Would that be your preference to go to, to Laura? Is that your preference?
So it looks like Roy has kind of set everything up as if we were going to go option two. Is that kind of your understanding of Roy?
Is that simpler?
I like where you don't have to do a bunch of transfers. That makes it more simple.
Yeah, otherwise you've got to reverse everything out.
Re-entries, reverse your entries and all that. So I said option two is a whole lot easier.
More time, we're actually here.
So what do you need to, let's go authorize you advertise and change the resolution?
I don't know that you necessarily need anything. I just need to run, we just need to run whatever advertisement it needs.
Should we go ahead and make the motion that we suggest we go to option two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, this is in an email from Roy.
Right.
But he doesn't have any statutes or anything on it.
Right.
He just says this decision has to happen before Friday, which is this Friday.
Okay.
Now, he doesn't say, he doesn't say anything about the ordinance itself has to be signed before Friday. He just says the decision to use option two has to happen before Friday. Then the additionals for December, we won't, they don't have to do any advertising if we do option two.
Yeah, those options one and two, those aren't Roy's creation. Now, those came directly from the state examiner.
Right, right. But I think Roy had set everything up as if we were going to go option two.
So I guess we just need to make a motion to use option two? And advertise that, and then we can do ordinance next meeting then?
I'm trying to find in the board of the council memorandum whether, where it says this has to be done or.
I didn't see anything in there that gave a.
By Friday, I don't know where, what that means. I'm just going by what Roy had in the email, just the decision.
Let's, let me see calendar here. Friday would be the advertisement, because we have to have it in paper by ten days.
Okay.
Prior to the meeting.
Let's go in to approve then, using option two, and then they can advertise it.
I think we'll have to.
Get it in by Wednesday.
It's for Larry to advertise then, before Friday.
So let me my motion then, that we agree to use option two with the CARES, CARES funding as presented?
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you want to take care of the advertising then on that?
Yes, I'll take care of that.
I'll draft the ordinance.
Super. Better take care of that, then, okay. All right. Oh, let me see, where is that email from, from the state? That has often wanted to hear.
Yeah, that's that, that's what I was looking at. That's Roy's email.
All right, so we now have travelers' claims.
And the travelers' claims, I think I printed them on front page here.
Yeah.
Do you already have a grant fund for CARES already created for?
Yeah.
So you need to create a one for it, then two, it looks like?
We have a grant fund for CARES Act stuff, it's eighty-nine and five.
Uh huh.
The Grant Care?
The CARES grant fund. You have a fund.
Yeah, eighty-nine and five. I thought you just talked about resolution.
No, no, I just want to make sure the fund existed before I.
Eighty-nine and five, that's what the new fund is.
Okay.
So that's just information from travelers' Hall of Fame, a couple claims. One of the guy actually ran into a tree in his own, and the other was a damage. All right, court report. Finding zoning report. This is from Malcolm McNeil, the report is from them. I have not read it yet. That suited the paint inspection on the. On the already work.
And this is Ken Alvede.
So he says in summary, he estimates less than one percent of the total surface area needs repairs. The coatings exhibit a good gloss retention and very little delamination. It's recommended that the performance of the morning work be inspected by an A level three certified coating inspector to ensure that the repairs are in compliance with the original spec. So we have a little repair, is any list there that needs to be made? And then inspected again, have it BEM again. So I, my guess would be that this should probably come from Nick. Nick, would you think that's where we should be, that we should send this report to the, to the people who did the work, so they can see what repairs need to be made? On page three, it's got enlisted, to repair those areas of crack coating should be removed. Then the joints should be recoiled and recoded with that.
I'm not sure, you said top, is it what section, page three you're looking at?
Page three, second paragraph. So it says spot repairs need in those areas.
What are you asking me, Jim?
We need to notify the people who did the work that it just needs to be done under warranty. Warranty yet?
Is our warranty still good? Yeah, we need to notify them in writing then.
That's why we did this, because the warranty was about to run out.
Right, so if somebody can give me the contact.
Don would have all that information. Do you want to contact Don, talk to him?
I can get it from Don.
He would have him, and he'd also have the architect. I don't know if, maybe it should come from even the engineering firm.
I'll see what I can get from Don, and I'll draft a letter for your signature if you want. I think the signature needs to come from the commissioners, but I can draft a letter for sure.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll make sure they get it in their hand. I think the warranty is up in December, so that's why they had this work done already. So we just need to make sure that they're aware, make sure we get this letter in the minutes, that was, that the work was done, and these recommendations were made on the warnings.
Right, yeah, it'd be Wednesday before I get to talk to Don. I'm at tomorrow, but I'll go talk to him on Wednesday and look and get a letter drafted to appropriate people.
If at some time in December, does it, it's going to be two more weeks before we meet. By the time they get it, do we need to, as soon as he gets it done, get it signed?
So if you guys give Jim a figure to sign, then I can draft the letter. I'll email it to all three of you to look at, but basically just indicating that these findings have been made, that they have a warranty under this agreement and.
I don't want to push a limit them receiving their, their end of the letter. So I'll make a motion to that effect, and we authorize Jim to sign for Bruce and I on the letter to, who wasn't done that? The company that done the coatings on the clock tower and upper structure of the courthouse.
No, I recommend certified mailing on that, though. That was the truth they have it. So I don't know if Laura wants to do it, or if you just want me to do it and file a claim for whatever.
Whatever we're changing for you, whatever, sure, should get it in and out.
I'll probably just send it and then send you guys a bill for whatever, six ninety-six or whatever it is.
That's fine. I'll second Dan's motion.
Is that what you want, opposed to check?
Right, I just wanted to get certified mailing out as fast as possible. That way, we don't miss our deadline.
So the motion has been made second to authorize me to sign the letter as soon as Nick gets that drafted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, sure.
Kevin, I can't think of the name of the.
I can't either.
You don't have that information, do you, Laura, as far as the agreement? Where they were coming in to do that?
It's probably up there in my office someplace, the green leaf.
If you find it, would you email it to me? If not, I'll go ask Don.
I know Don will have it. And he'll have the architect's contact information too.
Okay.
And the engineer, keeps an architect and the engineer's information as well.
Okay.
So Jim, are you also authorized, and it's go ahead and pay the bill for? So Jim, are you also authorized? And it's go ahead and pay the bill for one thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents?
Let's do that. Yeah, make that motion that we authorize. You got to pay for the inspection that done by Malcolm McNeil. And you got it there, okay?
Yeah.
One thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents.
And I'll second that.
All fair to say aye? Okay.
I didn't quite understand. They sent eighty foot lift and I thought we ordered that one point.
Can't take one year.
I was pretty sure that that's what we had ordered. Because he had told us we.
I think what it was, we, I think Don was looking at the one twenty, LaBuce, the the engineering company was coming to do other work and thought that they would have the longer, the longer lift to get them up there. So we wouldn't have to order one. We could just use what they had there. I don't think maybe it wasn't. They wrote an A and said, I guess what.
I wondered how that happened. Because I knew we was in question the last time.
We're going to hire that ourselves, but they were coming anyway to do work.
All right.
And all that, just so you know, the, in fact, we probably ought to make a, the motion on this to make sure it's okay. When the contractor came with the lift, they anticipated a soft ground because we just had rain and they ordered a pallet of three-quarter inch plywood, not treated, just, and not sanding, just plywood, put on the ground or drive this on. There were twelve pieces on that pallet. And they didn't eat it, didn't use it when they left. They didn't want to take it. They just left it with the courthouse. It's out, out in the driveway. So Don asked me what we could do with it. I know that the Historic Society needed some to replace the back part of the Historic Society museum. And so I just moved it down there. So I'd make the motion that we authorize this transit because not, county didn't pay for it. The county didn't buy it. It was just left there by the engineering company. Had to go someplace, but it was on county property. So I moved it. So I'd make the motion that we authorize the Historic Society to use that leftover plywood from the engineering company.
And I'll second that.
All fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right. I think that's all I got. You guys got any new business? Like all the old business I have is for Randy. You guys got any old business that you need to bring up? All right, then here we go. Julie.
I don't know if you guys have. Laura, did you still have a problem with the.
Yes.
And I have grant. So my report is, as I think it's been most months, our rent volume's up. Obviously now testing is up, numbers are up. We're seeing a lot more in our county for COVID.
I saw we were at four twenty today. I hadn't been upgraded up when I saw it and deaths fell at six earlier. Deaths paying at six. You have anything in the off.
As far as I know, everything's, yes, it's up today, mostly. They're having a hard time keeping up. They got, the state actually got behind over the weekend with computer work because they had so many tests coming in. See this off white talk. They had so many tests coming in that their system crashed.
Really?
So they got behind. So we had one day that it looked like we only had about four thousand cases, but we actually had several more than that. And the next day it looked like we had, I think, almost seven thousand. That was a glitch between those two days, so.
How are our local hospitals doing? Are we getting full? I know they're diverting some from Union to Clinton. Is that accurate?
They're not really diverting. So they're taking some of the less critical from Union and moving them to Clinton so that they have room in their intensive care area for the more critical patients at Union Terre Haute. When I talked to our outreach coordinator there at Union Terre Haute on Friday, I think, every inpatient bed that they had was filled. They opened up a new wing specifically for COVID and they had patients waiting or they were holding them in the ER until they could get a room available.
Union beds, is that is they opened up?
I can't remember how many wings, how many beds are in each of their wings. And I know with this going on right now, CMS has allowed them to, instead of having single, single rooms, private rooms, they've allowed them to double bunk some of their rooms depending on size and things. And they have extended the amount of patients that they're allowed to have per hall. But they're having so much issue staffing right now that they're reaching out to us and begging for help from the EMTs and medics at any hospital that we can help at. The state sent us an outreach on behalf of all of our local hospitals. So they're having trouble staffing. They're having issues with their staff, of course, being affected by the sick as well. So doing as much as we can to help. The vaccine program that I'm working on is moving forward. So in the next couple of weeks, I imagine that we'll be hearing back from the state about that. So we'll be doing the ambulance service. We'll be hosting a standalone vaccine clinic.
And that's all vaccines, not just COVID vaccine. That's all vaccines.
All vaccines. So when we went through our meeting with the state department of health, we found out that our county was the only one that does not offer vaccines. So through the county health department. So they asked if we would be willing to do a pilot program for them and start doing the vaccine clinic from birth to eighteen months for, or eighteen years for all childhood vaccines. The state's flu vaccine program and then that'll be the platform essentially for our COVID vaccine program. So I got most of the paperwork done. We've got our training done. We're waiting on our refrigerator. The state's actually providing the refrigerator and the travel case that we have to have.
Refrigerator, you mean the freezer, baby, baby below zero freezer?
No.
Just for vaccines.
So our information so far that we've got from the state is those vaccines will actually, the closest facility that we can have those at is Union Terre Haute. So those vaccines will go to Union Terre Haute and then we will get up to a forty-eight hour supply of those because they can only be out of the refrigerator for up to three days. So we will have to go to Union Terre Haute with our transport module, pick up a forty-eight hour supply, however many we intend to give out, bring them back, store them in a refrigerator. And we can keep them in that refrigerator for forty-eight seventy-two hours and then we have to take them back. So.
When you take them back, are they just restored or they have to be destroyed at the night?
They have to be destroyed.
Okay.
So we're working on that. That's moving forward. We've had some issues with our billing company and I've expressed some not nice things to them about them.
They've been good in the past, right?
They did really, really good when we first started and then throughout the first year and year and a half or so, they did okay. And lately we've picked up on a bunch of accounts that they hadn't built appropriately or they hadn't followed up with or we were having issues.
That's disappointing.
So Heather's been working really hard on that, but I'm starting to look into some of the classes. Hopefully they'll start doing the virtual classes again to have her be a certified biller for the ambulance service so that as soon as our contract is up with them, we can immediately swap everything over to her. So I am looking into doing some of that. That'll probably start in January. The last thing I have is the IPEP grant. I came to you guys a couple of months ago and asked about doing the IPEP grant on behalf of the safety committee for the county, which is actually put together for our work comp program.
Remember that's the first aid stuff, right?
Yep. So, and I have the quote attached, but it was for five first aid kits because we did not have operating functional first aid kits in the courthouse. And OSHA says that you have to have one on every floor and they have to be a certain size for however many people you hold and all that. So this will be, it's five first aid kits. So there's one for each floor of the courthouse and then there will be two for outside offices. I think the park needed one. And I don't know, I can't, was it the highway department? Randy, did you guys need a first aid kit? At the highway department?
I don't think so. Yeah.
There was one other one. I can't remember who it was. So anyway, it was a matching grant. It's an eighty-twenty grant. So the, there we have four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents and we have to foot the immaculately huge bill of one hundred and sixteen dollars.
Do you need approval from the.
I need approval. You guys approved for me to apply for the grant. I was just notified that we did get the grant and so now we need to sign the grant agreement form that we.
How much is our share? One sixteen what?
One sixteen and eighty-five.
I'd make that motion that we authorize payment for one hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents is our share of the IPEP grant?
And I'll second that.
All fair to say aye?
Aye.
And you just assigned something with the agreement?
Signature for the grant agreement, yep. Actually, Jim signed that one.
This one Laura signed, okay.
Laura, we'll need a copy of that. I've got to, still, I had to wait for the meeting tonight before I could send that off. I think that's all I have. We're just trying to keep up. Oh, Med Three, which was our oldest ambulance, it just left this past week to go up to Decatur to get remounted. So we do only have three ambulances right now, but we.
How long will that be?
They said the end of January. They really thought it would take a little bit for the chassis to come in and it came in two days after the ambulance got there. So there actually had a schedule on it. So hopefully it'll be about mid-January. It takes them a couple of months.
How are your, you got any people quarantined?
Not going much. This entire time, well, one office member from a potential family contact, I guess. This entire time I have not had any staff members that have been sick or have been quarantined due to something happening.
Great.
So they, I think I showed you guys the disciplinary stuff that I came up with in the beginning because I didn't want any issues with people not refusing to work PPE essentially. And so when, once everybody signed that, they realized that I was serious about it and we. They've done amazing.
That's good. You did good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris. Randy, is Chris back there?
He was earlier.
I just wanted to, a quick update on some of the grants that we've received. So I'm going to go in front of the council in December and then do get the account set up and get money transmitted, misses and cares acts.
And we just approved how to go, how to move that into the general, how to come up. So you guys will be able to work that out then.
So the first one is the State Homeland Security Grant. This is from two thousand and nineteen. And this grant is upgrading. We're using the money to upgrade our servers and to buy some other stuff. And we're having problems upgrading, getting the contractor to work with the server. Luckily enough, the state agreed to extend the grant so that the money will be available to us as we work through with the contractor to get this stuff going.
I don't want you to have to go through all this, but I just want them to understand your frustration. We got this system that was built years ago when Amy was here and she used a proprietor to do all the, all the work. He controls all the passwords. It's it's not the most organized company. Is that a good way to say that? Probably it is not the most organized budgetary financial company. And we are having an extremely, we, Chris is having an extremely difficult time because we've hired a new company, bringing this up the best we can and get things organized. He's just being slow about releasing the passwords and getting, getting them the information they need to have access to the equipment. If that, that person should, should die or go out of business or go away, we would have to replace probably everything we have. Probably look at a million bucks for a new system just because of the way it was built and handled and in one person's hands and that person doesn't want to play well with others. So I don't think he's doing maliciously. I think he just doesn't live in that world where he has to get whatever we ask. So Chris has been extremely patient with the, with this whole process. So keep at it.
The second grant is the two thousand twenty version of the State Homeland Security Program Grant and we're buying some stuff for the sheriff's department, some camera systems. And that's about two hundred thousand dollars the state's going to give to us. The next one is smaller. It's for, it's through the LEPC, but it's a hazardous material planning grant. And that's going to help us rewrite our, the LEPC hazardous material plan, response plan. And that's about, about a little over seven K. We're going to get a contractor to come in and do that. And once we get the LEPC to meet, we'll work through which contractor. The last one will be the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute Grant. They finally awarded that and that's thirty-eight thousand dollars, which will go towards helping the overtime for court security and then it's to buy some sanitation equipment for the jail.
Are we meeting Wednesday?
We will, yes.
Okay. Just for, for the two newspaper people over here, would you express your opinion on how set we are with our personal protection equipment, that kind of stuff? We in good shape?
I, I think we are in good shape. We, we have, we have a good amount of it that if, you know, to deal with the spike. And then we've got enough. I think a lot of that, the supply chain has kind of leveled out a little bit and so we're able to get more stuff in and we have a good reaction time. I think we just need to look at next year. You know, we're going to probably need more later on in the year. We just need to work with the council to just find how that will be funded, but I don't think it should be a dramatic issue.
Along the same lines, Julie, since you're still here, you have all, all the PPE as well for your folks?
We, in the very beginning, Chris and I got together and we just, every bit of PPE that we had for the county, we put together. It's all at my building. So we're sharing countywide. So we just have the main distribution comes to us or we buy it and then as the fire departments use it and as my guys use it, we restock ones up from our stockpile.
So that was my next, my third point on this was even our volunteer fire departments are all well, well-equipped with the PPE. They need to do their job as well, right? Really, really, I just want people to understand how excellent this group has worked to do to take care of, of our first responders countywide. I mean, we are, you guys have done well. You were a shining example for the rest of state and we are held up as an example on lots of cases for how well you've done that. So I appreciate it. Couldn't have been done without you.
The last grant was the brick grant, which we were denied. We, I was trying to get a generator for Randy's building, but that grant really doesn't cover that specific thing. So we're going to keep looking to see what's available to, you know, if there's ever a power outage, we want, you know, highway department to have power so they can do the stuff they need to do. That was it.
Can you email Mark if he doesn't respond by tomorrow afternoon if he comes?
Okay, all right. Good. Thanks. Appreciate it. Nine and ten tomorrow, I'm guessing? Yeah, tomorrow? Nine o'clock, ten o'clock, here?
No, it was Wednesday at three.
Oh, that's right. Tomorrow's Tuesday. Yeah, yeah, Wednesday. Oh, Wednesday at three though, I didn't remember that. Three o'clock, okay.
You had an appointment, didn't you?
Yeah, you got an appointment.
Ah, that's what it was. Gail's got one. Yeah, Gail's, that's right. Gail's got one. Three P M.
Don't worry. We'll keep your schedule for you, Tim, then. We got it.
Give me a call, okay? Let me know where I'm supposed to be and when. Yeah. All right. That's right. Gail's got to be in Indy Wednesday morning, so we can't do the meetings. Okay, Justin?
I just have a few things. And we're on track to see two hundred thousand by the end of the year for DOC and make housing.
How's that compared to other years?
We've hit three hundred thousand before and then we're still above where we were prior to twenty fourteen.
Okay.
I think that's last year that we were ever under that. So, so still pretty good. We had one of our reserve cars that was wrecked last weekend. Struck a deer. Insurance been notified. We're just kind of waiting to see where we're at on that. I don't know if it'll come look for the, as old as it is and the mileage.
He was in one of the claims, I think, wasn't he?
I don't know. I didn't hear him mention it. So I don't.
I didn't see it in the.
I thought, maybe I saw an email on it.
Are you fully staffed?
Oh, yeah, right now we are. Expecting a couple of jail officers. The one of them's going to retire in a month. One of my things going across the road to the prison, but other than that, we had seven people out last week or towards the middle of last week out either with COVID or awaiting testing. We have one that's positive, a sec one that I expect to be positive. And there's just two now that's pending test results, but I think that they should come back okay, but.
No inmates yet?
No.
Just positive, good.
No, we haven't the whole time. Been fortunate on that. And we're finishing, we did an update a few months ago at the jail. New paint, new flooring, new carpeting. So we got the final flooring down, have a poly spray over the concrete, the tile been there. I think the vinyl tile been glued there for twenty years, so.
When was that jail built?
Ninety-eight, I think. So we got a lot done. We painted and we're just, there's two rooms that we need to paint. One of them's almost done, so we're going to put the wall trim back on today, so. So it definitely needed most of. It hadn't been touched in twenty-two years, so.
I know a lot of counties are dealing with jails right now needing to expand or to upgrade. Are we in pretty good shape as far as?
Yeah, we got roughly around sixty plus inmates right now, so.
How many can we hold?
Ninety-two.
Okay.
So we're, we're still pretty good. Like I said, we're not housing any other county inmates right now, but with COVID, we're kind of afraid to.
Right.
Fountain County did open their jail, so we were housing some of theirs for a while, but yeah, we've still got some room.
Okay, that's good. Anything you need from us?
No, I think that's all I have.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
So you're young. You never show any symptoms of COVID? Have you guys tested? No, good.
No. No, somehow, maybe just the age, I don't know.
How old is he now?
Uh, fourteen months.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Randy? Randy? Did you hire truck drivers?
Yeah, hired three and lost one other. So really got two.
Okay. So you're still down one?
Still down about three.
Three, about, okay.
I don't have a whole lot this evening.
Bridgeston, Chesty Road.
He asked about...
Stop signs?
Stop signs in Bridgeston.
Yeah.
I got a list of them over there in the map. If you guys want Nick to go up in ordinance, if there's 22 signs, I'll give that to him.
Okay.
I would like to have a copy of that, Nick.
All right. Okay, an email to you?
Yeah, I think I can see it off the email.
Okay.
So we need an ordinance to put a stop sign at an intersection?
Yes.
Was Bridgeston ever incorporated?
I don't know if it was.
Larry, you know?
I don't think it was. Judson was.
Because it was platted. Yeah, and we've had some that were platted and existed as a former entity, but they just went away. I didn't know Bridgeston is organized down there as it is. I mean, it's a little town right there. I didn't know if they ever had them out.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Judson was dissolved, and I'm told it was here.
What else you got? Anything?
Oh, we've just been patching.
I got some roach for you that I've asked about a couple of them, see where you are with those. If you had a chance, I mean, you guys have been busy.
Level 70 East done. 1050 East is done.
1050, that's the one across from Walker Road, right? Super.
Finished it today.
And what else? What was the other one?
Level 70 East.
Okay. How about, is it 1000 East between 720 and Ferndale? I've got several calls on it, though, so you're aware of that? Okay. And then the other one was Cardinal Road. You think, I know they chip sealed that years ago and kind of broken down to pretty bad shape. I know I patched that last summer a bunch.
That is almost beyond matching.
Okay. That's what I told my thought was.
I'd like to get together with the residents on both sections of that road. See if we can tear it up this winter or here before long. Add stone to it, let it sit all the way in. Unless something happened to our budget, we try to go ahead and re-chip and seal it.
Because they had paid to chip seal it before and just fell apart. We have to pay for it this time with the chip seal. Okay. That'd be great if you could talk to them and see it.
Yeah.
So since it's their road, you have to talk to them about...
Well, I might too.
I know y'all, and I appreciate that. I don't know if it's going to go back to gravel, but that's going back to what it is. It's just tough.
Just for the winter.
How long is it? Yeah, how long is it? How many miles is it to chip seal it?
I don't remember. A little over two, I believe.
Okay, I was thinking three, so probably two. Then, okay, well, yeah, we'll just bet. What's it cost to chip seal? $30,000?
Around that.
Yeah, $30,000 a mile? Yeah. Great. If we can do that, that'd be great. They'd be thrilled to hear that. So I think they want to talk to them. It'd be great so they know we're doing something with it because it won't, I think, they just, we're not doing anything to it.
It was nice to let it sit all the way there. I could round up.
Settle down, sure.
Add a stone on it.
Sure.
Before we chip and seal it next year, we can see if there's any weak spots in it.
Right. Sound great. Okay, if I, I just got one that I've been talking to. Okay, let them know that what you're thinking of doing, and or you want me to wait until you get a chance to talk to them first?
No, that's fine.
Okay. That's just, Jessica Baxter I'll talk to. Her parents live right there, so she'll let them know. And I got a call from somebody drives a bus on Cardinal Road, and she was talking about how rough it was, that it was really beating her and the bus up.
Yeah, I had passion. That's not going to help.
Right, I agree. That's what I told her. I thought so too.
Maybe a few bigger holes in it, but...
But even the stone with that on the bus rust can be better than what she's driving across now, so that'd be...
Be smooth there. I might get a little washboardy.
They should be pleased with that, yeah. Okay.
There's one pretty honorary section there, too, on, we always call it Greencastle Road. It goes into Greencastle before it hits West Walnut. Back this way, there's heavy loaded area through there. It's terrible through there. You can't miss it. So keep that in mind.
I think they're almost down to 1200 East. So then they're going over 720 next. They'll probably start on it tomorrow maybe.
Great. Just keep it in mind. I was over today, actually, this morning. It was pitiful, so. Appreciate it, Randy.
We got tow path done, the part there just south of Mill Creek Bridge. 1125 North, 780 West, 790 West.
You had Harry Evans Bridge closed. What was going on there?
Somebody's hit it.
Really?
Yeah, tore the end of it out. The side.
Yeah.
Nothing structural, just the doghouse?
It looks like the doghouse. I didn't get down there today to look at it. It looked like just a doghouse in the picture. And then Port Mill's Bridge. You think you're going to be able to work on it?
Have you had more issues with it, or just...
The side is a little war.
Has...
Jim Barker looked at it Friday.
When's he going to be back, or is he, or...
I don't know if he is. Don't think he is.
Does he have more left to look at? The timber bridges?
No, he doesn't.
He's looking over it?
Looked at another one, just come through there and looked at that one.
Okay.
Other one's some other county.
Sagging on the end or in the middle? Or where's the sagging? Where's the sagging?
Mainly on the east end.
I thought it was on the end, yeah, okay.
It's been siding for quite years.
Lower cord breaking down.
It had a lower cord break.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's got it upright. It's cracked.
Okay.
And they thought that's what caused the sagging, but I don't think it really is. I think it's a kind of low cord.
I'll go out there and look at it and see what it's going to entail. See if I'm going to have to jack it up, crib it up to do it.
I think so. At least we'll have to.
All right. I'll go look at it and see what it's going to take to do. I'm actually booked through big part of next year, but we'll figure out something so we can fix. We don't want to...
Don't lose it.
We don't want no water.
Yeah, we're working on the Bridge 194 there on, there with John Martin's.
Right.
Got all the metal for a floor over there. We're replacing that. And then we need to go up to Jackass Mountain and get tapping up there. Hey, we're going to fix this down here.
We had your bridges around steam after Nick.
I didn't understand that.
My law partner lives on that.
1200 North.
He lives down in the gully there. That's my law partner, if you're not confused.
Law partner, I understand. Okay.
That's why they call it Jackass.
Yeah. Yeah, he lives in the gully there. He's the, well... You can figure out the party he is.
Got you.
That's all I have, I think.
Okay. Well, thanks for getting those roads. I had too many complaints other than 1000. So can you get that to the jury?
There we go. 1050 done today.
Super.
Almost got Ferndale road done, so when we get down Ferndale, we're down 1000. We've got about three horsebacks.
Ray Lee was also talking about somewhere in between, and she wasn't sure of the number, so I didn't want to share the number. Talking about Cardinal Road. Is there a road between Cardinal and Fisher? 425, maybe? Is that the number she gave me? Does that mean anything to you down there?
No.
Is there a connecting road?
Road 425 is a gravel road, isn't it?
She's talking about how washboardy it was. It was pretty bad shape. I didn't know how often you got down there with grader on that, so if they're down there, that'd be great. I'd turn right after you got there.
I patched on this week. They had another guy on vacation. So I shut grader down to have another. So keep patching through.
If you keep that in mind, I know that washboard just beats school buses up. I know how it is. She's asked, she said about five miles an hour through there to keep from beating it up.
Yeah, I bet she goes five miles.
Yeah, yeah. I was sure you could fasten it. Get right over this washboard place. It was all right. I don't know how that works. Those are the only calls I've had, but I did have several on 1000. I had three on 1000 between Ferndale and 720 there, so.
That's one we drove when we was looking.
Yes, it is. Yeah. So whatever you do there, anything for us?
Don't think so.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thanks.
You guys have a good evening?
You have a good evening.
Anybody else have anything for today?
Tell your brush guy, he's done a real good job, too. It's looking good.
He said you'd be done that other thing or something.
Yeah, it's looking good.
Yeah, you're going down to 375 East into Goddard.
My first time on 900 there going toward Vista Orchard. That's, that came out nice. That was nice.
Yeah, it did. I turned it over.
Pretty nice. Thank you, sir.
Cook Road turned out pretty good.
I agree with you.
Yeah, it did. I'll take care of it.
You need to get calls. I want you to know about Cook Road when you're quitting or broken. Then they, and you had to quit for a while. They were just like, why were they only doing half road like that? Why were you...
Had to wait on parts.
Yeah, yes, yes, ma'am. We're going to get back to you. I promise.
They got excited too quick.
Yeah, they get excited. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.